We're ready. I'm ready.
All right, we'll start. I call this meeting of Hampton City Council to order. Today is May 9, 2023, and it's 7:02. Would the clerk call the rules, please?
Councilman Chagri.
Present.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Yeah, present.
Councilman Hassan.
Present.
Uh, Councilman Musa is not present. Councilman Rafai is not present, and Mr. Mayor is present. We have a forum.
Thank you. Do we have any community announcements? Mr. Lindsey Davis.
I'll go first.
Go ahead.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I would like to invite you to the Hampton area disaster recovery group, ribbon cutting and grand opening on Friday, May 19 from 10 to noon. And we will also be following that with an open house and ice cream social, May 20 from noon to 2 o'clock. Our offices are located at 3048 Kniff. That's between Gallagher and Joseph Campo. And for the public watching, our regular office hours are Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 95. And we just recorded something with Greg for Channel 19, so you'll be able to catch us on Channel 19 and YouTube. But we really hope everybody comes out to our ribbon cutting, grand opening, and ice cream social, the 19th and 20th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a few things to add, so. So real soon, we are going to start our annual summer youth program. We get our annual grant from Detroit Wayne Integrated Health. So we're going to be looking for youth, as we always do, come the summer. So if anyone knows any youth interested in doing our summer internship, please let us know. The Hampton DDA is planning their annual emergence meeting. That's this Thursday from 7 to 9 p.m. Location is the Hampton Historical Museum at 9525 Joseph Campo. The Hampton Health Hike is coming up as well. That is hosted out here in front of City Hall. That'll be on Saturday, May 20. Start is 9:30 a.m. for that. And we also just had a recent thing. The 2023 recipient of the Governor's Award for Historic Preservation. It appears that our historic stadium received the award for that as well. So all that stuff is listed under community announcements, if anyone wants to look at it, including a bunch of flyers. And I believe the Health Hike flyer is also in Arabic, if I'm not mistaken.
I just have one mayor. This one is from API Asian Pacific Islander. And this is for tomorrow, actually. It's the, uh, they're celebrating API Heritage Month at Lansing Capitol Hill, Capitol Building. And if you join tomorrow, 10 o'clock, they will be meeting, you'll be meeting with the legislator and district candidates. And they'll be glad to see you tomorrow morning and then to lunch with the legislator. And you'll be recognized if you are attending from the council, mayor, or any community organization. APIA. Thank you. Thank you. Any more announcements?
Uh, Rana, you do take note at what time?
Yep, 7:04.
All right.
Thanks.
All right, we move to the Proclamations, Recognizations, and Presentations. And we have the first one, the Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. You want to go in?
Sure. City Hampton Proclamation and Recognition of Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Whereas Asian Pacific American Heritage Month is a time to celebrate and recognize the contributions of Asian and Pacific Islander Americans to the cultural fabric of the United States. And whereas Asian Pacific American Heritage Month provides an opportunity for Americans to learn more about the more about the diverse histories, cultures, and traditions of the Asian and Pacific Islander communities. And whereas Asian and Pacific Islander Americans have played a significant role in shaping the history and identity of the United States, including their contribution to the arts, science, business, government, and military. And whereas Asian Pacific American Heritage Month also provides the opportunity to reflect on the challenges that Asian and Pacific Islander Americans have faced and continue to face, including discrimination, racism, racism, and violence. And whereas Asian Pacific Islander Americans have made important contributions to the United States, and we must continue to work towards promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion for all communities. Therefore, be resolved, we hereby proclaim May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and urge all Americans to celebrate the rich history and cultural contributions of Asian and Pacific Islander Americans and to work towards creating a more inclusive and equitable society for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I can take the second one if you want.
I'll take it, and you take the third one.
Sounds good.
Next one is the Mental Health Awareness Month. And we have the City of Hampton Proclamation and Recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas mental health is an essential component of overall health and well-being and affects every person regardless of age, gender, race, or socioeconomic status. Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has highlighted the importance of mental health and well-being as individuals, and communities have experienced heightened levels of stress, anxiety, and depression. Whereas the stigma surrounding mental health issues often prevents individuals from seeking help, which can lead to negative consequences for both the individual and their loved ones. And whereas mental health awareness and education can help break down barriers and increase access to resources and support for those in need, and whereas May is recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month, providing an opportunity to raise public awareness and promote understanding of mental health issues. Therefore, be it resolved that we recognize the importance of mental health and well-being and commit to promoting mental health awareness and education throughout the month of May and beyond. We encourage everyone to prioritize their mental health, seek help when needed, and support those around them who may be struggling with mental health issues. Next one is the proclamation for the National Police Week.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to take that one?
Yeah.
Just prior to read that, I do want to mention too that apparently May 4 was International Firefighters Day. We did not do a proclamation from that, for that one, but the fire chief did advise me that he would make sure he got it to me for next year, so we don't miss it. And they also had their annual march this past Saturday as well. Now rolling into the list.
Last week was Municipal Clerk Week.
Apparently, there was a Clerk Week one as well that I wasn't aware of, that I'm sure will now make it through the agenda next year.
All right, back to the police.
City of Hampton Proclamation and Recognition of National Police Week. Whereas the brave men and women of law enforcement put their lives on the line every day to ensure the safety and security of our communities. And whereas National Police Week provides an opportunity to honor the service and sacrifice of these dedicated public servants. And whereas we recognize the ultimate sacrifice made by those officers who have given their lives in the line of duty and offer our condolences to their families and loved ones. And whereas we acknowledge the bravery, dedication, and professionalism of all law enforcement officers who work tirelessly to keep our communities safe. And whereas we pledge to support our law enforcement officers and work collaboratively with them to address the challenges facing our communities. Now therefore, I proclaim the week of May 14, 2023, through May 20, 2023, as National Police Week and call upon all citizens to join me in expressing our gratitude for the service and sacrifice of our law enforcement officers and in reaffirming our commitment to work together to create safe and thriving communities for all. Signed, Amir Gallow, Mayor of Hampton.
Thank you. And do we have an award?
Yes. Chief Fair?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So part of Police Week includes recognizing our employees for their hard work and dedication to our community. Every year, I ask the supervisors to nominate an employee that they believe stands out by their actions, work, and for recognition as Employee of the Year. As always, several good candidates are nominated, and it's very difficult to select a recipient. This year, we chose an officer and a dispatcher to be selected as recipients. We have Officer Christopher Fay. Whereas this officer has been a dedicated member of the Hampton Police Department. He has served as a field training officer for the past few years. He has volunteered to assist the department with recruiting efforts and remains a positive voice in the agency. He steps up and assists with training needs in the department. He has dedicated himself to the Hampton Police Department with honor and hard work. The Hampton Police Department gives great thanks to Officer Christopher Fay for his service.
Hold on, it's in slow motion.
And this year, we also have dispatcher Mark Collins. Mark Collins has been a dedicated member of the Hampton Police Department. As a dispatcher, he is often the first contact a person has with the police department. He interacts with the community in a positive and respectful way. He has taken several roles in the dispatch center, such as training, scheduling, keeping track of supplies, and mentoring of new dispatch employees. He has dedicated himself to the Hampton Police Department with honor and hard work. And Hampton Police Department gives thanks to him for his service.
Thank you.
And just a real quick, there were other employees that were also nominated, and I do want to give them a little bit of shout out. We had Sergeant Fadennis, Sergeant Jokai, Detective Endall, Detective Allison, and our crime analyst, Andrew Robinson.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we move to the additions and deletions. Do we have any additions, deletions to the agenda? No? All right, we'll move to the public comments.
Mr. Mayor, as we spoke prior, Mr. Hoekstra here, who is one of our appointments, has an appointment he has to attend. He had asked that we could sneak him in real quick to just introduce himself before he leaves out of here. Is that okay with you?
Yes.
Mr. Hoekstra, you want to quickly come up and just introduce yourself? And he is the DDA applicant.
Hi, good evening. My name is Brian Hoekstra. I'm applying for a position on the DDA board. And yeah, I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here. Just a little bit about myself. My wife and I moved to Hampton in August of last year, so just a short time ago. I'm currently serving as a business professor. I teach online, and that's been a lot of joy for me. I'm kind of a developer, I guess you'd say. And so it seems like this would be a nice way for me to serve and help the community if I would be appointed for this position. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. All right. We have, uh... Yeah, we have the other, the other appointee to the zoning, right? Muhammed Al Ghazan. Would you like to introduce yourself as well?
Did you want to just cover it now, then, Mayor?
We can do it.
Okay, all right, come on.
I am Muhammed Al Ghazan. I am living here since 1999. I'd like to do the position of zoning to serve our community in the city of Hampton. I live in the city of Hampton since 2004. I want to improve to the city of Hampton. I want to add my experience to serve our community. I work together with all the people in the city to make the city more happy.
Thank you. We'll be sworn in in a little bit after the conversation.
We didn't order because Mr. Hoekstra had to go, so.
So back to the public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gina, just to get this correct, you want to speak at the end of the agenda items? Okay. I have Justin, is it Jessa?
Yep.
Hampton President, 3 minutes, sir.
Thank you.
Many of you know me already. I'm Justin. Neighbor, friend. I'm here today. Normally, I would be working, but I really wanted to make it in today because, as you know, we got a precious few blocks of bike lane, and they're fantastic and they're wonderful. I've been here many a time, spoken to many of you personally about how unpleasant and often dangerous it is to be a bicyclist or a pedestrian in Hampton. And like many, many who, Hampton residents that don't get our attention, my primary form of transportation is my bicycle. And it is extremely dangerous and unpleasant. And I'm very grateful for the few blocks of bike lanes. And I would ask that we take this opportunity with the Joe Louis Greenway coming in to really revisit our bicycling and pedestrian infrastructure. I myself live on Norwalk. My mom lives on Cherist. Both of those streets could easily accommodate a protected bike lane on the other side of parked cars without losing any parking spots. Many of our residential streets are exactly like that. That would not only have the benefit of making my life better and easier, as well as anybody else that is bicycling, but it would also slow cars down on those streets, which would make our streets a lot more pleasant and safe for pedestrians, children playing, as well as anybody else walking around. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your attention, and thank you for the consideration.
Thank you, Justin. Mr. Mayor, that's all for public comment.
Okay. I was the shortest public comment. Do you want to have Lindsey?
Yeah, we didn't have any last week.
All right, we move to the constant agenda. This is approved in a single motion without discussion. They have A, approval of minutes from the April 25, 2023 regular city council meeting. B, approval of invoice register date ending May 9, 2023. C, approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending May 9, 2023. D, resolution 2023-61 approving appointments to boards and commissions. D, resolution 2023-62 approving temporary waiver of permit fees for citywide garage sale. I'll make a motions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No objections? All right, you want to swear them in, Rana?
Yes, sir. I believe Brian already left, so I'll go with my mom, huh?
Do you want to step up the podium? You're going to get sworn in now.
I state your name.
My name is Muhammed Al Ghazan.
Do solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties as.
Duties as.
Member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Member of the Zoning.
Board of Appeals.
Board of Appeals.
Of the City of Hampton.
City of Hampton.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations. Thank you, sir. You're all set.
All right, we move now to the public hearing. And we have resolution 2023-50B, second reading and public hearing of ordinance 2023-01, City of Hampton, 2023, 2024, general appropriation ordinance. Can I get a motion to open the hearing? I'm getting a motion.
Second.
All right. All right, this is the second hearing, right? Do we have anyone? Anyone here?
7:20. Anyone want to speak on this?
We trust it, so.
Mr. Mayor, I think that is all for public comment.
Okay.
So I need a motion to close, please.
All right, I'll make a motion. I'll close this.
And 7:20 again. All right, and then we need a motion to discuss, please?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to discuss.
Second.
Discussion?
Nothing. We trust. We see how this goes. One time.
We've been talking about it for a month.
Yeah, we did, we did.
Vote, Mayor?
Month's end.
All right. Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Chagri.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Uh, yes.
Okay, if it's an ordinance, does the mayor vote on this ordinance? I know it's not a...
He doesn't have, he can abstain.
Yeah.
Do you want to vote on it?
Do you have a say?
Okay. Resolution, Mr. Mayor, resolution 2023-50B approved.
You can say no, then blame us. Council approves.
And we have a budget. Okay. All right, we will move to the new.
We did that all in like a minute and 30 seconds.
Well, and months.
Yeah.
Months and then additional.
Absolutely.
All right, the new business, we have a resolution 2023-63 approving the purchase of four utility trucks for the Department, for the Department of Public Services. I make a motion?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have John with DPS. Do you want to discuss this resolution?
Previously, we approved for the budget to buy these vehicles next year, on the next year's budget. The problem is with the super duties, we won't be able to get any. They just don't have them. So I almost gave up looking for trucks, and I called one more place, and they just so happened that a municipality canceled their order. So they had six trucks. Just in the 15-minute conversation, they sold two of them. So it was getting close to closing time. I said, please hold the other four, and I'll call you back in the morning. I went upstairs, talked to the mayor, says, is there any way that we can purchase these vehicles out of this year's budget? Because next year, we won't be able to do it. They just won't have them. And he said, yes, we have, we have the capability of doing it. So I sent an email that night to say we would like to get these vehicles pending council approval. It was a good thing we did because there was already salesmen selling those other four vehicles. But since it was a whole, that letter that I sent in the middle of the night froze them up. We got them, pending approval. The other good thing is originally, we had three vehicles at $225,000 budgeted. We were able to get a really good price on them. I ended up getting four vehicles for $212,000. So we ended up getting an extra vehicle and saving a little bit on top of it. And they're all the same color. They're white, and they're multipurpose. Most, three of our F-350s and one of them is an F-150.
And I thought we bought another one a few months ago, right?
We had, uh, we have one that Bill Diamond got approved by council. That's still not here. And that was ordered. I don't even know if we're going to get it. So that's, that's a whole nother thing. So just because you order them doesn't mean that.
We're fighting getting what we need.
And the other thing is, they took the years, these trucks, and they're at this year's pricing. If we go on another model year because of the demand, they already said that the average truck is probably going to be anywhere from $3,000 to $5,000 more. So a little bit more savings there, too.
What's going to happen to the old trucks? Are they still going to be used?
We have a couple newer ones in the fleet. We're still using them. We're building the department up labor-wise. So, you know, it'll be up to eight, nine guys, possibly 10 guys. So we're going to need more vehicles. I did request a list of all the vehicles we have and said, which ones can we fix, which ones are junk, which ones we need to sell, whatnot. So I do have a list of things we will be getting rid of.
The ones we have are pretty rough shape. I mean, there are a couple new ones in the fleet. But as John stated, that department's growing, you know, with the new street sweeper program and everything else we got going. We anticipate it, you know, probably growing a little bit more. So we do need the trucks. They are all coming out of protected funds. It's not out of the general fund. I mean, that's what the money's there for. And also, we should be really nice and squared away for next winter now as well. So all three, three of these four are the F-350s, which are perfect for the plowing.
And for the Salters, that's what I'm trying to gear up for. That was my fear is we have more guys, we have next winter come, and big snow, and we got two trucks running around trying to do the whole city. Now, everything would be, I can get four or five guys out at the same time if the city done faster.
We got more trucks, more people, more workforce. That means better services.
But definitely it's going to be noticeable, for sure.
We'll ramp it up.
Sounds, sounds, but for time, it's good.
I'm sorry, you ordered last month. Is that where you're going to be there? I don't mind it.
Sure.
Do you get any of this?
We've had, in the, uh, Chief Andy, you have a bunch canceled that you ordered, even?
Yes, it's correct. Ford is just not, they're just canceling departments' orders. They're not filling orders.
So we, uh, Bill Diamond, when he was still here prior, did order a group of vehicles. I think very few of those, if any, maybe the one came in.
One came in, and one's questionable.
Yeah, so we, we don't honestly know if we're going to get it or not. I mean, if we get it, great. I mean, we can use it. It's not like it's going to go to the waste. I mean, we need these vehicles. But I mean, it's, we don't even know, so. So we were, we've been fortunate to get these cancellations and such. And same with the street sweeper, too. We got lucky on that one. So we're, we're having a bit of luck here, and we're trying to monopolize upon it.
I think that Musa will confuse the other one for street sweeping, the one that we passed last meeting.
It's just, it's, that was the street sweeper meeting.
All right.
Okay, Mr. T. It's a good thing, if you guys think, if I buy, then it's going to be more clean and more efficient. Snow time, real quick response. That's all we need. Because we have the money, we can use it, but again, we have to careful. We buy, make sure everything mechanically, all those trucks is, you know, your experience, make sure it's okay to run. Don't bring here. One of them all just got shut, shut down now, and engine gone, it's gone. I know it's, it's, it's not that thing, so we have to worry about that. And also, I hope we don't have anymore, don't have to bring any more emergency manager to sell those four trucks again, it did before. So hopefully, it's everything okay. I'm okay with that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any more discussion?
Yeah, we got some, some street, after the rain, we closed many street. But some other street, I guess there are many holes, and the, and the street is not closed.
Oh, for the power?
Yeah, they don't, nobody touches. They pass somewhere.
Yeah.
And the other street, a lot, I guess, wait. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, nobody touch anything, still today.
We just went through about $21,000 worth of asphalt. We're buying it as fast as we can get it. So as they deliver it, it's going in a truck, we're running it out until it is actually out. So as soon as they deliver it, usually within one or two days, I'm having the crews out there working on it. But there's, there's backlog on actually getting the cold batch.
Yeah, when they batch the other one, it's still bad. It look the street, when they batches, only look bad. But some street, still bad.
Yep.
When the rain coming second and a second, they make it bigger.
All right. We can go ahead and call them, please.
Councilman El Samiri.
Uh, yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Chagri.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2023-63 approved.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. All right, we are done. We move to the reports. That's a quick week.
Don't jinx it. It's all reports. I don't know where they're going to take you.
And the public comments, too, there? So we move to the reports, and I'll start with my report. Talk about some of the activities that happened over the past two weeks. I think the major one was the trip to Washington, DC with all the city council members. We had the honor to go inside the White House, see the president. He didn't have any bilateral meetings with anyone. He spoke, we listened to him, we took pictures, and then head back home. There was a lot of Bengali politics activities going on there. Prime Minister was there.
Different state.
Prime Minister, the Minister of Foreign Affairs. There were protests for the ruling party, for the opposition. Our city council was divided into two halves. Only person who protested with both sides was Councilman Hassan. So it was a good trip, and everybody enjoyed it. And other activities that happened this weekend, the strawberry festival, I went there. It was fun, short visit. And then there was another political event for Councilman Abu Musa. Thanks for the invitation. I went there, too. Other than that, everything is going well for Hampton. Just trying to serve the people. Pressing issue at this time is the potholes. Everywhere we go, they talk about it. So hopefully, we can get them done soon now. And that's all for my report. We move to the mayor's fourth and report.
Mr. Chair, it is really very important, our visit to Washington White House. This is the first time in the Hampton history that all the elected officials... is the first time in the Hamtramck history that all the elected official was invited as a Muslim elected official, and, and was inside, and a couple of congressmen recognized as soon as we said Ilham Poomo, he said, "Oh, I know Hamtramck, all Muslim elected official," and today even also is for on Muslim elected official related. So we are proud of Hamtramck, and it's really very good, it's Senator, and everybody then knows, we had a, a thank you mayor and Max Gabrino, last minute communicate with the two council member, invitation, it was real quick, and it was good response, and thus, we did, we did very good, we enjoy Abuja, and it is really historical, remarkable for Hamtramck, I'm proud to be in Hamtramck.
Chair, city council reports, who wants to start?
I don't, nothing much to say, thank you, thank you, city manager and deputy, or assistant city manager, making the smooth trip for us to organize properly, everything was right on spot, I appreciate the great hard work. And as Mr. Mayor and Mr. Mayor Portem saying, you know, we got a fun trip, and being honest, everybody recognized us, that we're one of the only Muslim city in America, that all Muslim council and mayor, so many people talk about it, and it was a nice trip, we enjoyed, we had fun. And I just have a couple concern, I think I bring up to the city manager attention, I think you said you're going to bring it to the John attention, couple of the street sign, one was cornered at Casmeed, another one was missing somewhere in the corner, and I forgot exactly location, and you said I'll get fixed, but a couple people calling back that's not been fixed yet, so, I mean, when people go out to ticketing people, not, don't tell them not to just look at the people, garbage can open or closed, and it should have ticket, make sure their eyes keep open to everything else was going on in the city, it'll make it more easier for us, because, as I mentioned before, it's a small city, we all know each other, we used to all see each other, and anything, small things happen, people call us right away, they don't take a minute to say something to us, so, you know, we are a peaceful city, and you guys driving this city in the proper direction, I see, you know, we have ballot, budget balance, we have purchasing many things that we need to be, and we have all those employees that we needed to be, so we are in good shape, look like, and so, we'll go good in this city. Thanks everyone for your hard work, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Chagri, well, yeah, good evening to you folks, thank you for being here today, thank you for your available time, we are spending with us. As you heard from our mayor, Mayor Portem, Councilman, that trip to Washington DC, I want to thanks, thank you to city manager, deputy assistant city manager, Molly, Madame Claverana, for making the trip smooth and possible to attend the White House event, you know, we enjoyed it, and it was historical, I mean, for me, it was a very sincere to be inside the White House, I don't think I would have a chance to go there if I wasn't elected as a council member, so I'm very grateful, appreciate it, to our president, Joe Biden, and Dr. Biden for inviting us. And I have three more things, well, four more things that I will done, I only talk about. I think here is the sound system isn't too good, some reason, I don't think people hear well in the back, yeah, it's kind of, so, I had Bill Myers, who provided me sound system in my event, it was good, so maybe we need to have him look at, you know, the sound system here, Mr. Myers, you know, I hear, like, people cannot hear us, even on the...
Oh, on the YouTube?
Yeah, some reason.
The only thing is, if I, if I up the speakers here, because the mics are too, so close to distance, you see what happens?
Oh, noise, you're going to cause a frequency conflict.
Exactly, so that's why I have to keep it down a couple notches, so that it doesn't have the echo, but I watch the YouTube, because I have a light, I watch these YouTube videos all the time, all the time.
There's some ladies complained before, okay, but you know, it's...
But no, we definitely upgraded, definitely in the talks.
And we talked about renovating this room.
Councilman, we, I also, we had talked at a past meeting where Greg actually volunteered to collaborate with Mr. Meyer to do that, and me and Greg just spoke about that last week, actually.
Okay.
And I was hoping that when they go out of free time, maybe they can come in, maybe they can make some suggestions.
Sounds good, okay. So the third thing, the parking meter, okay, I went through Joseph Campo today and yesterday. The parking meter needs to be a little bit more visible, so the parking spot, you know, on the curb, there is no number, I know on the meter, there's a number, and on the post, numbers are there, but maybe if we put a numbers on the, on the sidewalk curb, it will help to people understand their spots, you know, they're putting money into wrong spots, and they're getting tickets sent out to their house, something to consider. Also, I noticed the corner of the street, corner of the curb, you know, yellow spots, yellow painted is there, but it doesn't say you cannot park, and the parking meter is there, camera is there, they taking pictures, but their bumper is touching a little bit of the curb, of the yellow paint, and they're getting ticket. Maybe there should be a sign there saying, "No parking this spot at all," you know, it may mitigate the issues of the tickets, you know, it'll help the people to recognize the parking spots. Third, fourth thing, potholes, we already talked about it, but I'm getting a lot of complaints that potholes are on the streets, on the alleyways, especially behind the Joseph Campo Business District. There's some business owners, they say they have came into the building and complained and, or requested to patch up the potholes, but no one has responded. So John or Max, if you could take a look at that, you know, because they bring their merchants and their staff through the back, and they're getting, you know, potholes hit and the tire flat and stuff like that. So I appreciate if you guys take a look at that, and that's all from my report, thank you so much for me.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, our council, city manager Max Gabrino, police chief, and city clerk, and people in front of me, and who join with us by the social media or YouTube. Thank you, we are excellent in Washington DC. Monday morning, me and Mohit Mahmood, my friend, we were together, we had a good experience, and some experience we do not need to share. We have a very good experience, we've been there, and we meet a lot of people, elected officials. Personally, I met Kamala Harris Vice President, Sheikar, it is the first time opportunity to meet the Vice President, and we see a lot of elected official there, meet a lot of people there, Congressman Rashida Tlaib, and Yehan Amor, all other people, it is the first time opportunity, I was in third time in the council, I'm lucky at least, I've been invited to White House and be there. Really, really thankful to Max Gabrino, Mohit Mahmood, Nayyam Chodhi, 11th hour, they helped me a lot to get my COVID vaccine testing paper, thank you very much for your all help. And one thing I need to share with you, part of it, everybody explain it, a lot of people complaining, and the garbage can, sometimes wind took the garbage can off, and they get the ticket for those. Please tell our code enforcement officer, follow those things, sometimes people love to put this one, something happen, naturally, wind took the, open it, and they get that they should not get the ticket for those things. And I hope we're going to work for the alleys, people are waiting for the, fixing the alleys too. Thank you very much for listening to me and give me the opportunity, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wood, you want to say, again?
No.
So, just, just to clarify, there was a headline on the news that says Muslim mayor was blocked from entering the White House, that wasn't me.
I know this guy.
Someone from New Jersey, he was on the watch list, so, it's not... So we're done with the city council report, the next one is the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things, in response to Councilman Wood's concern about the Kona Kiasmer signs, those signs have all been ordered, I immediately relayed them to John, and John places them in order, we're basically just waiting for them to get in. In addition to that, we're still waiting for the pink, the replacement Pinky Dara sign to come in as well, so there's a number of signs, as soon as they come in, they'll get put up. The numbers on the meters, in response to Councilman Chagri, there are numbers on top of the meters currently and on the sides of the meters. Last summer, we did begin actually painting the sidewalk as well, to add the numbers of the sidewalk, I think we just ran out of time, if I'm not mistaken, to get them all done, just manpower shortages and such, it's, it's still on our agenda, it's still an ongoing project, along with many things, that as soon as we get manpower and time to do it, we will, and it's, obviously, as our manpower increases, some of these things will get checked off the list a little bit faster. In addition to the signs, you had mentioned for the prohibited parking and the end caps of Joseph Campo, just, was it two weeks ago, John and I had a discussion about ordering signs just for that exact purpose, and those signs are also ordered. The potholes, as our DPS explained, it's an ongoing thing, as people come into City Hall and make complaints, we try to address the complaints first, but frankly, we do get a lot of them. There's not one that came into me that John didn't get that we didn't address, so I don't know who they would have talked to, if that's the case, we're both very available throughout the day, if you want to send them right to us with our names, we want to have to get them on the list and address them right away. I do have an update, too, in regards to the Joel Louis Greenway, I, myself, along with a couple of our council members, subcommittee, met with our CED department, along with Wayne County, our contractor that is helping us design part of the Greenway going through the city, and we came up with multiple potential plans for what we would do specifically on the south end. Initially, there was a thought of maybe opening the alley, doing some two-way traffic on Goodson, that plan unfortunately fell apart due to one of the, or one of the owners of property not wanting to cooperate with that, but we still have two additional plans on, on, on the plate that we're exploring. We are exploring, still doing two-way traffic at the end of Goodson, and maybe potentially turning a lot into a turnaround there, not my favorite of the plans, and then lastly, the plan which I favor is, we are having Hennessy currently draft up some plans to see if creating angled parking in front of Veterans Park would work for this, we believe it would, if all goes well, it would be a very small push into the park, approximately 10 feet or so, just to be able to accommodate the angled parking, which then would add up another seven extra spots to that area, and our hope would be to simultaneously do a crosswalk as well, right in that area, which would address the restaurants and the, the business there. So that is our tentative plan that we're working on right now, Hennessy is drawing it up. Of course, all this is contingent upon Wayne County approving that, and of course, honorable council approving it as well. It is payable out of Act 51 funds, so it can all be done on a protected fund, but that's where we are right now, at least on that section. We are still exploring the, essentially, Holbrook North, we currently have a contractor helping us design what Joel Louis Greenway would look, look like between Holbrook and Kniff. We do think that going through the alley as part of that and using sharos on Campo is our best option for that section. Going north from Kniff, it's still up in the air, we have explored several options that, obviously, the council subcommittee, myself, our staff, and all our contractors are going to have to explore much more deeply, because we believe north of Kniff will be a very challenging as well. Couple things just to throw out there for people to think about, where we're exploring the option of maybe actually shifting the Greenway onto the sidewalk there, since the sidewalk is so large north of Kniff, and/or maybe creating a median in the middle of Joseph Campo, the protected bike way right up the center of Joseph Campo. Again, that would be contingent upon Wayne County allowing it, it would be a novel idea, but it would be in line with our actual master plan of having a median through that area, which would also slow traffic down as well, and aesthetically, look pretty nice. All this is, you know, in the planning, I'm going to need a lot of council's input on this, along with our contractors and our staff, but it is ongoing, we have not forgotten about Ham, Hamtramck Market and the other stores down there, they are very much so on our radar. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and we move back to the public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lynn Blazi.
Two minutes.
Hi, Mayor, Council, I'll be quick, I just want to congratulate Wamar Ghazali and Brian for their appointments, and also our Department of Public Services for their new trucks, and you guys for doing a good budget, like, balanced budget, that's a big deal, so, good job, everyone.
Thank you.
Ms. Gina Wilson Stewart, River Rouge resident, welcome, two minutes, please, on agenda items only.
That's why I asked you. I thought it was, I must have read that wrong, somebody was non-agenda items at the end.
That's why I personally asked you before we started, because I had, I haven't seen it, like, nobody asked her.
I would, I would...
If you want to...
Yeah, we suspend the law, suspend the law, and mayor...
That's fine, two minutes. All right, two minutes. Hi, good afternoon, I'm Gina Wilson Stewart, I'm the fourth vice president of the NAACP, and I'm the area manager, and this is my area. For the Michigan State Conference, our goal is to reactivate branches of the NAACP that's been closed or inactive for years, and I've been assigned Hamtramck as well as Highland Park. So my goal today is just to introduce myself, and first, I wanted to say congratulations on your historic visit to Washington DC, I'm sure it was awesome to see everybody in person, versus going to me. But we know, in Washington, there's a lot of racial disparities that are still going on, so we have to have another voice to fight for those, and that's what the NAACP does. And I know you guys are very diverse here, and I congratulate you for all winning your elections, but we know we have other work we need to do. So I'm here, and I, we want to just make sure that people know that we're available. So my contact information, my phone number is 734-734-506-0767, and then people can reach me at naacp.michigan@gmail.com if anybody's interested, I don't know how to reach people that enough, they want to start the NAACP branch, so my first stop was to come to the council meeting, and so, that's why I'm here.
Thank you for being here.
And I'll reach better next time.
Thank you, Tina. Mr. Mayor, that's all for public comment.
All right, so we are...
We do have a close session?
Yes. Close session.
Ready to motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second motion.
Congratulations.
Oh, let's do it now.